All right, I'm gonna call the city council work session to order with roll call. Mayor Van Gordon here, councillor Pitts.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Stare.
Here.
Councillor Woodrow and councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
All right, councillor Woodrow's excuse for the evening, we have two work session items, the first one is the museum advisory committee applicant interviews with Emily David for the staff.
Good evening, mayor and councillors, I am Emily David, director of the library and the museum and it's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of the museum advisory committee. We are asking that you interview three candidates, there's three open positions, there's two candidates that are renewing and one new applicant. So I believe the first applicant or the first interviewer is for Patty Sage if we're ready.
Does anybody have any questions before we get started? All right, I think we're ready. Until we get.
Hello.
Hang on one second, Patty.
Nancy on or Mary Bridget. I just noticed just just now that one of the members of this committee is actually also now a new Springfield employee.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Hello again Patty.
Hello.
Um, so the the plan really is that I'm gonna ask all the questions. And we're still sort of figuring out how to do these interviews now that we're in person in the most formal setting as possible. Normally, we would go around and introduce introduce ourselves, but.
I heard it.
Well, thank you. Are you are you ready for the first question?
Hit me with it.
All right. Why are you interested in serving on the museum committee?
Um, I have been, um, I was a teacher in the district for twenty six years of my thirty years of teaching. And, um, I have served on the Springfield Museum Board. From, I think it was about two thousand eight until twelve. Um, I worked with the Teaching American History Grant. And, um, so I've been real involved with, uh, the museum for for quite a while and I have a great history. Love of history, I love history and I love Springfield history. We moved over here from Eugene in two thousand eleven, so I really wanna get back involved with my town. Um, I volunteer on a board in Eugene and. I wanna get involved here.
Okay, so I'm going to, you've touched on some of this already, so describe your professional and personal experiences that relates to your desire to become a museum committee member. I don't know if you have more to add.
Not real, I mean, not really, I taught elementary school for thirty years. Oregon Trail and, you know, local history was was always a highlight.
The Springfield Museum has rotating exhibit space. One of the roles of the committee is to make recommendations for exhibits and programs. Can you give us an example of an exhibit you might recommend for the museum?
The. Um. You know, I I did a lot of research this summer on on the bridges that we have and the the old Trolley Bridge. And just how that linked up with with our. Communities to the west. I I find that kind of fascinating, how long that lasted and. Or just, I know they're doing a lot of road improvement in in the area, so maybe to kind of involve that. You know, present day with transportation, transportation, I think that might be kind of interesting.
And how do you think the work of the museum, uh, the Springfield History Museum improves our community?
Hmm. They just kind of grounds us in our past, where we came from. Who. Who we are, you know? I think it's a great space over there, it's a wonderful building and we just really need to preserve it and. Take care of everything that has been donated to it and that it's about, yeah.
All right, thank you so much, that was the last question.
Yay.
All right, Emily.
Okay, I believe the next applicant is with us in the room as well, Jennifer Blythe.
And I'm up for reappointment.
Hello Jenna.
Patty.
Do you need us to introduce ourselves too?
Yeah, thank you, I mean, you're welcome to share something unique and interesting, maybe a fun fact, but no pressure.
All right, why are you interested in serving on and continuing your service on the museum committee?
Um, I've really enjoyed participating on that committee so far. I'm involved in a lot of of the little projects that we're doing right now. We're currently putting together a. A kind of a historical atlas, uh, which will be published hopefully next year. We worked on the joint program of the Heritage Awards. I I'm super also into local history and, uh, really like digging around and finding tidbits of history that. People forgot even his existed, I guess, like and treasure hunting and in our in these buildings that I work on, I'm an architect here in town and so. As we're remodeling a lot of the buildings on Main Street, just like trying to recreate the puzzle of who has used that building over time and. Kind of a lot of cultural and economic factors that brought it to where it is today and. Just I just enjoy that a lot and how that can serve Main Street long term.
Could you describe any of your professional experiences as it relates to your desire to, uh, become a museum committee member?
Um, I mean, I guess I just mentioned that a little bit, so as an architect, we, our firm is on Main Street and we're really involved in the revitalization and. We really like to use to uncover that history of a building that we're about to remodel. In order to like inform. The work that we do on the building, it doesn't need to be a reenactment of old timey times, but just there are a lot of cool. Assets that we have in downtown that we may not have even realized were because they've been covered up by just decades of. Layers of new things and really when you peel a bunch of that away, um, you reveal like original transom windows above a lot of the storefronts that. Really give that character to downtown that has been kind of concealed over the last forty years, so.
The Springfield Museum has a rotating exhibit space, one of the roles of the committee is to recommend. Make recommendations for exhibits and programs, can you please give us an example of a an exhibit you might recommend?
All day, I could talk about this all day.
One, one.
So one thing I'm really interested to explore and I think could be really cool to put something together about is the influence of. Fire and how it's shaped our downtown over history, so there are a lot of, um, gaps in the kind of architectural fabric of downtown and a lot of that happened to because of fire. Um, so even just the space right down here, right, we have a huge empty block between the museum and the, um, and the art center. And that was a fire, you know, that happened to burn down Alexander's Department Store and it's been sitting as a as a. Empty space for a long time, it doesn't mean it can't be activated, but it's just interesting to know that there was a thing and there was a fire and that's why it looks the way that it does today. Even just the building of brick buildings in the nineteen tens happened as a result of fire because. You know, buildings were wood before that and fire was a major threat and then, of course, we have the wildfire issue now and just thinking about how fire shapes. A community is really fascinating and the development of a fire department and the trucks that go with that, I mean, there's so many things. A fire bell that's on display in the gallery right now, like that's the original fire bell, so cool.
How do you think the work of the Springfield History Museum improves our community?
Uh, I think through, you know, just uncovering all of those lost stories and those stories go to pre-colonial times, not just, you know. Post-colonial history, but just understanding, recapturing and telling the story of a place. Helps people to appreciate the place and appreciate the nuance of the place. Which then fosters stewardship of that place, which is really important in building and revitalizing a downtown and making a downtown that you feel. Invested in and proud of and you really wanna be a part of.
Great, thank you so much.
So our final candidate is Tara Priat and it, um, we reached out to her and didn't hear back, I know she's been having some medical issues, so she isn't, uh, we just checked and I don't think she's in on Zoom, so she's not here this evening, she is reapplying, she's been on the. The committee for the last three years.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, Emily, there's three appointments. Correct, all right, thank you. All right. Any discussion?
I like them.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, Leonard, Damian, anything that you guys want to add?
I I guess I would just ask, um, Emily's probably got some experience with the group, is Tara, the Tara Priat, has she fit in pretty well?
Well, I can tell you that Tara works at the Lane County History Museum, so she has a lot of experience and, um, has been an active member in the, on the committee, so. I would say my answer would be yes, I think she fits well with the group.
Good, that's all I got, I'm I'm happy to move forward, thanks.
Okay, so, um, we're moving two out of the three forward. And then, and then I know we're gonna do a committee appointment, uh, recruitment probably February, March, um, if we can recruit for the the third opening and then if Tara's feeling better, she can reapply.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Second item is budget checking with the finance director.
All right, good evening, uh, mayor and council. So typically in the fall, we like to get in front of you, uh, with the five-year general fund forecast as we kick off the coming budget cycle. To give you some context into some of the challenges that we'll be, uh, facing as we put together the budget and, uh, some context for the budget that we'll be bringing to you, uh, in the spring. Uh, additionally though, um, with that five-year forecast and assumptions that we'll share with you, we're looking for some guidance this evening. We continue to have a structural imbalance, um, as a result of of measure five and fifty and just how we fund government, uh, in the state of Oregon. And so this has just been our sort of situation here for decades, uh, and typically in addressing that, um, structural imbalance, we have three tools. One of those tools is finding efficiencies, uh, and restructuring and staff reductions. That's been the tool we've historically used, uh, the other tools are service level changes and new revenue sources. We're at a point where I feel that we've really exhausted, uh, the, uh, efficiencies and staffing reductions, we'll continue to look for those, always will. But we really need to start looking to the other tools to address this imbalance. And so, uh, before we start putting energy and we've had this conversation in the past in regards to, uh, service level changes and, uh, new revenues. Covid and then the ARPA funds put a pause on that conversation, uh, we're getting ready to reengage and we wanna make sure that we're putting our focus, uh, in the areas, uh, that you want. So we're looking for guidance and and whether you'd like us to focus more on service level changes, on new revenues or a combination of the two. And I'm not looking for that answer right now, we can jump into the conversation and then come back to that. So let's start with the five-year, uh, general fund forecast. I think the first thing I I wanna point out here is is looking at, we're we're putting together the fiscal year twenty four budget in the coming year. Uh, that's the column that's shaded in gray and if we go right down to the bottom, uh, we have the ending cash as a percent of operating expenditures. Typically, we like to have twenty to twenty-five percent, we'd like it to be more under twenty-five percent range, but twenty percent is the floor that we establish. That reserve is what gets us from July first, uh, until, uh, November, when the property tax receipts start to come in. Um, we're at twenty-one percent, um, right now as, uh, things are forecasted, that's a good place to be, uh, going into this budget and that has a lot to do with the ARPA funding. That we've used to stabilize the general fund, going out into fiscal year twenty-five, you can see that we dropped down to sixteen percent. Uh, we have a number of positions that are being funded through ARPA funds that are right now in our special revenue fund. Those will be coming back into the general fund, uh, mid, uh, fiscal year twenty-five, the ARPA funding has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And that's why you see that drop down to sixteen percent and then a more significant drop to, uh, ten and then four percent in that outer year. We've made a lot of, I think, uh, gains, uh, in terms of some of the, um, initiatives that we've we've taken here over the past few years and addressing our structural imbalance. You know, in twenty and twenty-one, we did some significant, um, uh, cuts. Uh, and then the other big item was, um, engaging sub and, um, negotiating the in lieu of increase. Um, however, we've also had some setbacks, um, uh, you know, one of those being our our risk and liability insurance and the increase that we've seen in those premiums. Uh, we've seen, um, coming out of Salem, uh, the paid family medical leave, which is coming into our, um, uh, twenty-four budget. Uh, and then, uh, lastly, um, you know, we had a jail medical vendor, uh, that is, uh, getting out of the business or at least, um, providing support to our jail. Uh, we found a new vendor, uh, but the cost is doubled. And so it feels like, you know, we make these, um, sort of steps forward and then we end up, you know, with a few steps backwards. Um, but I think the the larger sort of need here really is is to really find a sustainable, um, kind of source of funding for the services that we provide. Um, the other thing I think I'd like to point out here is the transfer to the ambulance fund. Uh, if you look at the deficit spend in fiscal year twenty-four, it's around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the transfer to the ambulance fund is seven hundred thousand dollars in that year and then it grows over the coming years. That's something we've been forecasting, but we hadn't, um, seen come into our general fund yet in terms of having to actually do a subsidy. Uh, that changed last fiscal year where we had a subsidy of around seven hundred thousand dollars, it had a lot to do with the change in software and getting behind on some billings. Um, however, um, that, uh, corrects itself in fiscal year twenty-three, I mean, there's revenues that we were gonna eventually collect, it was just a timing issue. So, you know, that's one of the things we've been keeping an eye on, um, is, you know, uh, G E M T has helped, um, I think, sort of. Uh, prolong that, um, but eventually the value we're gaining through G E M T is not gonna address the longer structural issue we have in the ambulance fund. And then I think the other bigger issue that you've become aware of recently is that Metro West is getting out of the transport business. And that work is gonna come back into our ambulance fund and, uh, is gonna create, I think, um, additional challenges. Uh, tonight, there are a number of department directors here to answer questions as well, if if you wanna go into some of that, uh, detail and I believe Chief Caven is attending by, um. Uh, video and can come up if if needed for questions in regards to that. So I'm gonna just give you a moment to absorb that and also this can be a dialogue, if you have questions, you can ask them now or you can hold them.
Not seeing anybody ready to, uh, no. Corey.
Well, I'm sure we're gonna explore all of the options, but when we talk about finding additional revenue sources. I'm interested in what are what are the suggestions around that and what are we thinking around that and, um. Yeah.
So I'm I'm not ready to go into the detail of naming those different revenue sources, but just to give you, um, kind of an idea of how we approach that is. You know, our challenges are the same challenges in every city across Oregon and, um, and so. We typically like to watch what our peer cities are doing and we've seen a lot of of cities implementing different types of revenues to address this. Uh, you know, we. Uh, we don't wanna be that sort of progressive sort of leading in terms of these types of revenues, but when we start to see. Kind of more adoption of certain types of revenues in cities, uh, that are similar to Springfield, that's when we start to step back, take a look and say, hey, maybe that's a possibility for, uh, our community. And so that's what we'll be doing is is going out there and and looking at, uh, what other cities are doing and ones that we think might, uh, work well for this community. Um, the other thing we might consider doing is is maybe consulting with someone to, um, you know, help us, uh, identify, uh, alternative revenues that maybe are more familiar for what's being done across the state. And so that's another possibility.
Leonard.
Thanks, I really, um, just wanted to ask about the ambulance fund, um, with the provider pulling out, would it be. A possibility to just do our ambulance work, our routine ambulance transport and our. Higher urgency transport, um, in-house, would it be possible to do it with, uh, with fire personnel, for instance?
So that's your question for Chief Caven, um, do you wanna bring him up?
I would love to bring Chief Caven up, yes.
All right, I think I got my mic on, let's see if we get the camera to open up. Good evening, so, uh, thanks for bringing up and answering that question, we are actively exploring or planning for bringing this work. Um, in-house, uh, it already coincides with some ambulance system redesign work we're doing to get the right. Not only right resource, the right calls, but the right workforce, um, on the right calls and expanding. Um, opportunities for the community to work for Eugene Springfield Fire and so. Uh, absorbing that work, uh, under the fire department's umbrella, uh, does make sense, having fire personnel do it. Um, it's kind of the very most expensive option that would be out there, least likely, um, to help stabilize our ambulance fund and. Uh, so very preliminary, at least, we look at and the the private contractor has been pretty open with us as far as sharing. Call data, revenue data and the normal reporting, um, so we're able to forecast out a little bit, what resources would we end up deploying? Um, and then what would be that, uh, cost recovery? Um, it looks pretty positive for us, could be, uh, a help to help stabilize things. Uh, but in particular, the work we're already doing around redesigning the workforce that serves on the ambulances, um, should help us in this, uh, out-year forecast.
Thanks, chief.
So I guess I have a follow-up question to that, chief, so, or this may be a neat question too, when I look at this forecast. Is that assuming that that ambulance work is going back specifically to sort of fire personnel? That like the, I guess, the old way when it was all all transports were done with the the most advanced life support that we could, or is that assuming? Some sort of, right, new business model that we could, that that we can sort out?
So that actually, um, this news is so recent that it's not actually baked into this model yet, so this was based on their pre, um, um. News, um, kind of forecast, typically, um, and and I'm comfortable with this approach from, but. Work that they provide us tend to be conservative. And, um, uh, so I I don't wanna say take them with a grain of salt, but I, you know, it, we haven't really realized the the kind of, um, um. Amounts or forecast, um, deficits that we've been expecting, um, though we've been trending in that direction. So with this news, I'm assuming that it will have a negative impact on the ambulance fund finances unless, uh, Chief Caven feels otherwise. Uh, making, uh, those numbers, I think, more likely, um, than prior to that news. Back to answer you looking for, uh, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, and and I, it's a good question, a good answer, um, as far as exploring kind of how we take that work on, as we know right now, that works bundled and given to a contractor. Uh, so a piece of what we're looking at is it makes sense to keep that bundled. Um, and put the work within one city or the other to kind of manage that new component of the system underneath our umbrella. Um, if we do go that route or if we do split it out between the two separate ATFs, which makes it a bit more, um, complex. Uh, we'll need bridge funding from when we first start taking the work back on to, uh, when we actually start receiving those bills, it's. Ninety to a hundred and twenty days from when we actually provide a service to to getting those, uh, that cost recovery money, uh, coming back in the door and so. Um, there's some complex pieces of that, we're gonna work on that, but I think the bigger part of answering your question. No, our our continued work is to transition those most expensive assets off of ambulances, the firefighters. Um, what we find is our systems is quite busy. Um, and staffing them in that way, um, while growing to the the demand, um, just didn't make good financial sense going down in the future, so. We were preparing, uh, to get on both council schedules, uh, here in the future to talk about the redesign work that's underway currently. Um, and then also address this, uh, emerging issue at that same time, we should have more clarity and answers. Um, on that, but in the out-years, uh, right now, the forecast for us, uh, preliminary shows that, um, it will show a little bit of blue sky. As far as just the way we would staff that work, the revenue that would come in from it. Um, and the capacity that those units would actually help add to the nine-one-one system, um, during periods of high demand.
And and I think, and I and and I understand that you're in the, in the early stages of that. Here's the, I guess ultimately, here's the question that I have, we can't take on, um, from a city financial perspective. A new set of business on an enterprise fund that would require a subsidy. Right, like as, and I'm looking around for head nods to make sure everybody understands that. Already subsidizing a significant amount of this service, so am I, am I assuming correctly? That if this thing does not pencil out and we are not, it's not self-sustaining, then we're not gonna be taking, that we're gonna go out to, we're gonna consider a third-party vendor?
Um, so, and that's a great question as well, one thing I think we probably all know, but I'll I'll repeat it just so. Um, folks have it is this work is, uh, our legal responsibility. Um, so if they, you know, pulled out tonight, we would pick up, uh, that work just like we did nineteen eighty-one, when the last private company abandoned us. Um, so we know that, uh, we did preliminary work, we didn't just dive in to try to bring this work into fire. Reached out to the private industry to find out what's the market look like and and who's bidding, um, and the answer we got was, um, probably nobody, uh. Tried to reach out to Falk and Salem, next nearest private provider, um, they did not respond to our request to make contact, uh, AMR, which is a large national company. They did, out of Portland, we had a good conversation, he explained what was going on in the market. Um, our biggest problem here, challenge in in trying to recruit a vendor if we if we did. Was that, uh, one, that we wouldn't get any, and two, that all we're offering is, um, the non-emergency side of the business. Um, which doesn't necessarily pencil out if you don't have the economy of scale of of the entire, um, transport business.
Okay, so, but what I'm hearing is that that is still being considered as you're putting together more information and that we we as a council are gonna see more. Like what the game plan is before anything happens, right?
Yeah, absolutely, so, um, not to turn this into a work session about the ambulances, but, uh, basically, uh, you know, they gave us notice that they didn't intend to renew their contract at the end of June. They would like out sooner, um, and work with us on that, but again, that has to work for us, uh, both timelines, workforce, um, all all of that, so. Yes.
Okay, uh, Joe.
So I'm just trying to get my arms around this, correct me if I'm wrong, on these sets of facts that I think I know here. Is that based on the chart in front of us, we're looking at a five to six million dollar deficit over time. And it looks like five million of that, just just shy a hundred or three hundred thousand shy, five million of that is personnel. And so we also know that we had this in-house and that failed because of personnel costs. And so we went outside and have some other outfit that's now doing that, is that correct? Were all those correct facts? Somebody?
More or less.
More or less, hopefully more than less.
Yes.
Okay. So now I hear that we're looking at it internally again. When we already know that's failed. So I'm I'm a little concerned about that and how. That, um, looking at it internally is being formulated and other folks. And their other folks' plans and what's the big picture here and what? What thoughts are driving that and where is the end goal?
So I think one short answer to that or, uh, you know, as related to this redesign work that we'd like to present to you that, um. We just initiated the first phase of that, uh, within the city of Eugene, um, the next phase is is with some city, Springfield assets. It builds upon our successes with the BLS program, bringing, um, kind of the right resource, the right employee to, uh, the right calls. Um, and lowering our total overall cost, so staffing the firefighters is the most expensive, we're transitioning away from that. Uh, to a more financially sustainable model, uh, bringing this work in, we already have those classifications in within the BLS. Um, and single role ALS workforce, uh, whereas when this work first got contracted out. Um, in particular, in the city of Eugene, um, all the assets we had to put on ambulances were were firefighter paramedics. Um, now we have a different workforce that we have access to. To help, you know, basically make sure that the the cost to run the program don't exceed the cost recovery options available.
All right, thanks chief, Nancy looks like she wants to jump in here.
I perhaps we could.
I, perhaps we can, I can provide some context, any decision regarding ambulance services, yes, we do have, you know, there is. That liability at hand, if we, if we suddenly lost a, a provider, that would, that would be, obviously that happened in the past, that was, um, that was something that the city really had to scramble over, was my understanding. Um, any type of policy decision like that would require coming before this body for um, your decision-making and, um, so. I don't want you to think that this is a foregone conclusion, um, we're still in the information gathering stages. Um, however, I, I do think it is important to note that the, the marketplace itself has changed, um, you know, it's. It's not as easy to recruit um, workers as we know, so there are some different factors at play that, you know. Make this a little bit of a different analogy, but I think it would, uh, it warrants its own, probably more than one, obviously, work session on this.
Yeah, all right, so I, I think you, you guys just uh, brought up a fact that was uh, sort of. People had a lot of opinions about, and I understand that we're gonna get more information about it and have a longer conversation about it. Um, Leonard?
Um, thanks, yeah, just um, n- not to beat a dead horse, but one more thing about the ambulances, um, there. What I know from my limited experience with the ambulance companies is that there are providers, and then there were providers, I. I don't think that Metro West is what they call the bottom feeder outfit, I think that they charge a respectable rate for their services and. I don't know who it was that we had before that proved to be um. More than competitive with our rates, but, you know, with initial outlay, and I, I don't even know if we're gonna have to buy ambulances to make this happen, but. Um, if we do. Then it seems to me that it could still be cost-effective depending on. What the, um, what the contract was with Metro West before this. Thanks.
All right. So I still have other, other questions, you have more material to present?
Yes.
All right, let's do that.
Before I leave the slide to you, I just wanna say one other thing, and I've, I've heard this uh, comment before, and looking at this forecast, it looks. A lot like. Um, the previous forecast, and there's this feeling like that outer year number never comes. So, one of the things I, I wanna say is, it can't, we by law have to put the, a forward, a balanced budget, so we take action uh, to address it. Um, secondly, uh, we really were um, through some of those initiatives, improving that, that five-year outlook, and if we were to. Uh, back out uh, the uh, subsidy to the ambulance fund, and we are still looking for uh, efficiencies as the chief spoke to uh, over there, and we'll continue to work on that. If we back out the uh, subsidy to the ambulance fund, and then there's a number of positions that we've added back in, uh, and I'm gonna get to those and why we've added those back in. Um, it brings that, that outer year back up into, you know, a closer to that twenty percent, it's still below, but it's not as bad, so we have made improvements. Um, as I get further into this conversation now, you know, one of the things those cuts in twenty and twenty-one uh, have shown us is, is that we are a lean organization and. And possibly too lean in some areas, and that can result in uh, other costs, uh, you know, as we've learned, so. Um, we'll talk about that, um, you know, but we, we've made improvements, and, but as long as we're in this funding environment with measure five and fifty. This is gonna be our reality, and we need to kind of find our way over to a more sustainable source of funding. Um, so, uh, with that, let's move into the assumptions. Uh, the other thing too, I'd like to, to mention is, I think i- typically with forecast, there's a bias towards being very conservative. And uh, one of the things that we're trying to do is sort of break, you know, we really kind of beat up these assumptions and. We don't wanna doom and gloom projection, we don't want sort of a rosy, you know, kind of too rosy projection, we're, we're really trying to zero in on what we really think. Is for the most part a relatively kind of accurate, uh, you know, not biased in one direction or the other. So, uh, starting with our uh, revenue assumptions, uh, we started with the, a baseline of three percent growth, uh, a- and then we built into that, um. Uh, Markola Metals, and then we have an Enterprise Zone Exploration uh, International Paper. And uh, what we have is over this forecast period, uh, at least over the period that has the Markola Metals and Enterprise Zone in it, which is, I think. Twenty-four through twenty-six, we're averaging between four to five and a half percent increases. In our property tax revenue, to give you some context for that, our historical average is three point four percent. And that would include other at time periods of development and other Enterprise Zone expirations coming on, so. The fact that our forecast is, is four to five and a half percent over that period, we're pretty bullish on the property taxes. Um, looking at our total revenues, uh, we're, um, including the property taxes, but all the other revenues, we're looking at average growth of, of around three point two percent. That's right in line with our historical uh, average. Um, moving into the expenditures, um, um, our uh, cost of living assumption doesn't uh, and factor in uh, inflation right now. Um, the feds are taking some pretty aggressive action, uh, and trying to tame inflation. Uh, we are still operating in the assumption that they are gonna be successful. Uh, and that this inflation is not gonna find its way into our wages. Uh, but that's something we're gonna keep a close eye on, right now, uh, we're using our historical kind of averages, which is around three percent uh, um, increases year over year across. All labor groups. Uh, materials and services, uh, we built in a, a five percent uh, inflation for fiscal year uh, twenty-four, then we're stepping that down to four percent in twenty-five, then back to three percent in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Uh, underspend, uh, recognizing that we set a legal appropriation, but for a number of reasons, we never fully expend that appropriation. Um, you know, it could be projects that we don't get to, it could be uh, vacancies, um, we're um, uh. Putting in underspend of eight hundred thousand per year, which is right in line with typically what we experienced. Little bit of context in that, though, our underspend for uh, fiscal year twenty-two was three hundred thousand. As we've cut our budget tighter and tighter, we're gonna see our underspend also uh, shrink. Um, but with some staffing additions and then some vacancies that we typically experience, we're, we're going back up to eight hundred thousand. And then lastly, on the jail medical contract, uh, that was a six hundred thousand per year increase, uh, we're uh. Having a two hundred thousand dollar subsidy from the general fund for that contract. Um, our hope is, uh, we're working with our, our, uh, we've leased out jail beds uh, to partner agencies, and we're working on those contracts, and hopefully. We'll be able to recover more, uh, and there's the possibility that we'll be able to recover the full amount, but right now, we're making the assumption that we're gonna have about a two hundred thousand subsidy that we need to factor in.
So like all forecasts, this is accurate today and change in the future?
Uh, tomorrow, yes.
Okay. Uh, any questions on assumptions? All right, moving on, Joe.
One, one quick one on the, you said, I'm confused with the wording. Uh, on the medical contract, that was an increase of six hundred thousand, or it says two hundred of six hundred thousand per year, so were we already spending six hundred?
Yeah, I think if memory is right, um, our previous contract was around six hundred thousand and it doubled to one point two million, so of that six hundred thousand increase. Two hundred thousand of that is being covered by the general fund. Yes, and for that uh, increase, we're getting an increased service level, so uh, it's a twenty-four seven.
Yeah, no, I know, we got, we got much more better coverage, I, I'm not balking at that at all, I'm just trying to get my hands around what the total cost per year and what, what it was and what it is.
So do we have? Chief Shear, can you?
I can, I can kind of give you a swag if you don't mind.
No, that's fine.
I think previously it was right around six hundred thou- six hundred thousand, and I think it increased to one point two.
So it's just, it was double.
Correct, it about doubled, and we are, we are in the process of recovering some of that through, through increased contracts with um, Eugene, and we're exploring the contracts, we have the feds as well, so we're, we're working on ways to recover even more of that six hundred.
Just printing beds, okay. So the two hundred thousand, I'm just trying to figure out where the two hundred thousand fit in there.
So with that increase uh, in fiscal year uh, twenty-three, um, uh, cause I don't think it's, it's the full year for that year, uh, we absorbed, it's about four hundred seventy-two thousand. Um, increase in fiscal year twenty-three, we absorbed it in the levy. Um, the levy is what funds the jail, starting in fiscal year uh, twenty-four, we have four hundred thousand dollars in the levy, and we have two hundred thousand dollars coming from the general fund to cover the full six hundred. Based on our projections, um, uh, we feel that the levy can absorb two hundred thousand of it without, a- and then the other two hundred thousands coming through increased revenue. From uh, our jail bed leases. Our hope is, you know, that one is a conservative estimate right now, because when we put this together, we really had no idea where that would go, but from a conversation that I had with Jessica uh, just today. Um, I, there's a high probability that we're gonna be able to cover um, quite a bit more than the two hundred uh, thousand. All right, uh, ARPA funded critical positions, so as I mentioned, um, the staffing reductions in, in twenty and twenty-one, and kind of. Getting to a point where we recognize we were too lean in some places, uh, we've added positions back in twenty-two, uh, twenty-three, and we're gonna have, uh, I think another position added back in twenty-four. Um, starting with um, twenty-three, we added back um, two positions in fire, and these are positions that we have held vacant. Um, to just again balance our budget, but these are positions that were required uh, to uh, fund um. Uh, through the IGA that we have with our partner agency, and um, they were left uh, unfilled for a period of time where it was getting to the point that uh, it was becoming a point of tension. And so this is just us stepping up and, and fulfilling our, our IGA uh, obligations. Uh, moving down to uh, the deputy police chief, I think this is a position that many of you are familiar with, and I'm gonna let Nancy speak to this one.
Thank you, it's awkward to co- coordinate a, a team presentation when you're sitting right next to each other. Um, I requested, um, I talked to Chief Shear about this, about um, uh, adding a deputy chief, I did some uh, checking into this, this was a position that the city had. Uh, previously in prior um, administrations, prior to Chief Shear, uh, coming on and, and even prior to Chief Lewis. Um, my intent here is really, you know, as we are um, looking at increasing. Our uh, transparency and our accessibility with our police department and making a lot of the um, policy changes that have happened. Um, Chief Shear just hasn't had the ability to be out in the community as much, um, and he's been, had to be more focused in on um. More administrative matters that really don't fall customarily under a chief, and he probably, you know, he probably, he didn't, he never complains, but this is my observation. Based on over twenty years working with law enforcement, um, I would also say, you know, our. Apartment, this department, like many of the other departments, um, in the city is understaffed, you know, we, you know, we, we're always. Trying to recruit more officers because there's just a natural churn in this uh, position level, but a- also on the leadership side, um. So for me, it's a couple of things, it's um, increased accountability to the community, it's um, succession planning as well. Um, and it's really kind of trying to put back resources that were. I think probably could have really been very helpful, um, had that been done in the past, so I'm looking forward to. That, um, the next, a cou- couple of positions are related in the human resources side of the house. Um, we have had a lot of state mandates coming regarding uh, he- that affect human resources, the Oregon Pay Equity Law is one of them. Um, is, we have family leave law that's coming in, Council Rodney's nodding her head because she does all this HR kind of stuff. Um, and again, so in the city, w- we did a lot of cuts with the last recession, we are still not at a staffing level. Um, that we were in pre-recession, and I think um, when we start talking more about the budget, we're going to be showing you that trend. Um, so that was, this position has really helped. W- with a lot of that administration of, um, how we do different types of mandates from the state, but also we have uh, people that are retiring. New hiring, so we really needed to, to beef up our um, administration and HR. I also uh, noticed when I came to the city a couple of years ago, that there didn't seem to be a comprehensive um, centralized training. Structure, and what I mean by that is just really uh, somebody that's dedicated to tracking where we are. In some of the mandated training that we would like to have all employees receive, so for instance, um, preventing sexual harassment. Um, diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives, um, things that, you know, are good organizational development types of training, making sure. That we're all hitting those marks, I think we do a really good job in um, some of the more legally mandated things to do, um, but. I'd like to take that um, to a, to the next level for the city, and I think this is, really boils down to a loss prevention uh. Philosophy, um, it's kind of like if you don't invest in training, you're going to pay for it one way or the other, right, because you don't want to have. People that are performing functions that may not have um, be adequately trained. And, you know, I think we do a good job on some of the more critical functions, obviously, safety, uh, job duties, but some of these higher um. Functions that you could uh, run into liability, I think we could uh, be a little bit stronger on that. Uh, the other one was the Legislative Economic Development Analyst, this is a position that's partially funded through the uh, general fund, partially through um. The um, urban uh, through CETA, um, we're doing a ton of work on our ECTA projects and um, really needed to get that extra um. Uh, it capacity in the CMO office.
All right, and I know that we're pushing up against time, so I'll try to be a little quicker here, um. Last two positions, uh, senior planner, there's a number of, of uh, planning positions that are funded by ARPA that are not coming back into the general fund, I wanna recognize that, there's three of them. This is a position actually that was created as a limited duration while they did a development uh, code update. And there's this recognition now with a lot of the mandates coming down uh, through the state that our development codes could be in a constant state of update, and so this is a limited duration position. That kept getting pushed out a year after year after year that we've uh, decided to make permanent, and then the programmer analyst, um, you know, this is a position that's kind of based on succession planning. It's hard to find um, uh, develop, developers with people's soft experience, you have to grow them in-house and it takes time to grow them. Uh, additionally, we have some um, external vendor contracts that we uh, think that we can slowly dial back and replace within-house staff, which is, uh, gives us more value, actually, uh, than the vendor contracts. Um, and with that, moving on to. Considerations. Um, as I mentioned before, inflation, um, we haven't factored in uh, the inflationary environment into our labor at this time, um, it's our expectation that it will come back down. But we'll watch that closely and adjust accordingly, um, recession, again, as part of trying to tame inflation, the possibility of, of. Of causing us to go into recession, the question then becomes, um, how deep, how long, um, again, another thing that we'll watch closely. Telework uh, and commercial vacancies uh, in this uh, telework environment, um, you know, we have large commercial spaces that we're watching. Uh, if they'll be coming back into those spaces, or if those uh, organizations will stay uh, remote. Uh, where that can impact is, it doesn't impact us in the short term, because the value they, is already set for the property taxes on those spaces, and they'll continue to pay them. It sometimes results in challenges to those property tax valuations, and those can take years to resolve, but something we're paying attention to. Uh, the ambulance fund, we've spoken to, the jail medical expense, we've spoken to, and then finally. Uh, city facilities, maintenance and replacement uh, as a government, uh, again, this is pretty consistent across most, I think, uh, agencies. We're great at building assets, not always great at maintaining them, um, in some previous budgets, we were starting to set aside some dollars for future uh, capital maintenance and replacement. Um, however, uh, we've, we cut those in, I believe, twenty-two, and they are not in our twenty-three budget, nor do we plan on putting them right now in our twenty-four budget, so it's just an area that concerns me. Um, questions?
Any other questions? All right, so, uh, I guess I had three points that, that I wanted to bring up. One of them was, when you look at, when you look at that five-year forecast, I know it can be, I can, it can be big, it can be scary. And I think um, it's important to see any big organization, if you forecast revenue five years out, it will look like that, and we haven't done anything. Yet to address what, what is ultimately a structural deficit, and I know it's important for us to see that there is a structural deficit, we need to address it. But also, it, everybody's kind of, you know, private, public, nonprofit is always sort of out of whack five years from now. Um, the second thing. That I do wanna point out, is there's a lot of federal legislative work being done around um, agency uh, uh, services like cahoots right now. And this is a place that we've always sort of monitored, but we've not really done a great job of being able to leverage and understand the work that's being done. In the Medicaid space and how that money's becoming available um, to fund programs like cahoots. And when I think about the amount that we su- that we provide to have a cahoot service, I really wanna get our arms around. Um, if there's federal dollars that are coming down on the Medicaid side. If we can leverage that money as being the funding source for cahoots, we can effectively move it off of our books and still maintain the same level of service, so I think that's uh, that's valuable. And then. I guess the third piece, um. Is, I. Is, I think I'm open to probably the medium version of this, right, which is, hey, if we look around at other agencies and they have different funding models. It is valuable for us to explore that conversation, um, but that's gotta be balanced with efficiency and being able to understand and, and contain costs where appropriate. Right, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't do it all with cost, we shouldn't do it all with revenue, but look to see on individual areas where it makes sense to try to approach. but look to see on individual areas where it makes sense to try to approach those areas where it makes sense. And I guess I got to add a fourth bonus point while I'm getting to wrap up here. There are issues in here that we really need to break out for the 2023, you know, when that, when the year changes over, you know, facilities needs to be a longer conversation, right? Like, you know, what we're doing with the jail beds, you know, needs to be a longer conversation. And I just want to put a flag in that, or some of these big conversations need to come back as part of, you know, council goal setting and things like that. Corey?
Strategic planning. I set you up for that. I know. I think it does fit really well with, you know, earlier conversations around us actually having a strategic plan. And that's where those conversations about, you know, what does our revenue structure look like? Do we want to set specific goals and plans around getting to, you know, structurally balanced budget and things like that? I think we can, we can pull together as an organization to start to have those conversations.
All right. We are over time for this, so I'm giving one last chance. I know we'll get another opportunity to share plenty of opinions. All right. Thank you so much, Nate. I always, I, these aren't easy conversations. And someday you're going to show up and say we had more money than we thought. But not today. All right. We are adjourned. And then we'll take about 60 seconds of a break and then we will switch over to the regular session. We're going to revise our time limit and take about a three-minute break. So some, so just stay with us and we will get started here shortly. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council regular session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Pitts.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Stare.
Here.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
And Counselor Woodrow is excused for the evening. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin our meeting tonight, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called on to provide public testimony. There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. Heidi Larwick from Spark Labs has been approved for 10 minutes at the beginning of the business from the audience this evening. And then we will have standard business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the entrance of the council chamber and give it to the city recorder. If you're joining with, online with a tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the city council chambers, anyone who has raised their virtual hand. And Neil, could you let us know how many people are joining us this evening?
Mayor, we have approximately 22 participants online and 23 in the room.
Thank you. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is the consent calendar.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar. Second.
And Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
I.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Aye.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Aye.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero noes, one absent. Next item, please.
And next item is you have one public hearing tonight. Public hearing number one is the Comcast franchise extension. This is ordinance number two, an ordinance to extend the term of ordinance 6208, granting to Comcast of Oregon 2, Inc., a franchise for operations of a cable telecommunications system, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading and Neil O'Bringers here for the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Neil said, this is a first reading, no action required. But the, ultimately, it extends Comcast's cable TV franchise through January of 2025. Staff from Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County have been working jointly to negotiate a renewal of the franchise. We were optimistic that we'd be able to reach agreement this summer, but couldn't quite, couldn't quite reach agreement. And so we're hoping to extend the franchise for, until January 2025. We're hopeful that we'll be able to conclude negotiations well before then, but this duration gives us plenty of time hopefully to wrap up negotiations. All right. Are there any questions?
Comcast finally opened an office back up in Springfield, but for customer support is like good, real good for us.
Right. Then I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I do not have any cards for this item. Neil, do you have anybody on Zoom that wants to speak?
We do have a hand of it is Christina Cras, our Assistant City Attorney. I don't know if she's on for this item, but we're gonna. Okay. No hands for this item.
All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing. This is no action required, first reading. Next item, please.
Mayor, next item is business from the audience. And the first item, as you mentioned earlier, is a Spark Lab introduction.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Heidi Larwick. I'm the Executive Director of Connectin Lane County. And I'm here to talk about our hope for a space at the Booth Kelly Center. But before I do that, I just wanted to give you a brief background on the organization so you kind of understand what we're coming to with this. Connectin Lane County started at the Education Service District about eight years ago as an initiative, really with the hope of trying to increase high school graduation for all 16 school districts in our county. Since that time, we've grown pretty immensely from a staff of two to 17. We're reaching youth in the entire county, so from the coast to Mackenzie and Oak Ridge, all the way down south to Cottage Grove and north to Junction City. In that time, we have grown three programs. The first is called Elevate, which is a career connected learning program. So we're taking young people outside of the classroom and we're connecting them with industry through experiences like job shadows, internships, tours, hands-on competitions, things that they can really take what they've learned in their core content classes like math and science and see how it's applied in industry. Our second program is called Navigate, and it's finding those kids that have disengaged from school. Either they've dropped out or they're just sort of on the fringes and trying to reengage them and completing that education and getting them on an employment path. And our third program, which is called Spark, is really about hands-on learning. This is our newest program. It's been around for about a year and a half, and we opened with our first physical facility in Eugene. We have equipment in this facility where young people can come and they can learn technical and professional skills. The equipment is something that you might see on a manufacturing or a tech company. It's 6,000 square feet and we have been at capacity for the last year and a half. So much so that we're actually busing Springfield kids over to Eugene to access the facility. When the board heard that and the community heard it, they suggested that maybe we start to look at a Springfield site. So we weren't busing kids over from the east side of the county into downtown Eugene. And so I wanted to share with you a little bit about what we hope to do with Booth Kelly. There's a space there. It's 11,000 square feet. We'd like to turn it into another hands-on learning center equipped with, again, with manufacturing technology and computer science equipment. Have brought up, can't really see it in the Zoom, but I wanted to show you a brief rendering of what it could look like inside. It's a really active learning space where young people are collaborating. They're solving problems. Anytime a student is in this facility, they're solving real-world problems. We're giving them lengths of time to do it and they're working together. One of the, a couple of unique things about the, what we're calling Spark at Booth Kelly is that we hope to launch a pre-apprenticeship program in manufacturing there, working really closely with Springfield School District to provide an opportunity for the students to walk during the day, come take classes there and potentially go back to the, the school. We hope to create a workforce center. The employment department is in a place where young people feel welcome right now. There's not a lot of resources there for them and a significant portion of what we do in our work is help young people get connected to jobs. We'd put on resume workshops. We do practice interviews. We help with job search strategies. And so right now they're coming to our facility in Eugene, but they're often competing with classes that are happening there. And so part of our hope with the Booth Kelly site is to have a dedicated space for workforce development. A place where they can drop in, they can come to a class. We also offer financial foundations, so personal finance classes. A lot of young people are having their first jobs and they're not quite sure what to do with their first paycheck. And so we're helping them kind of figure out how to open a bank account, what it looks like to save, have some saving goals. And so we want to have a place where they can come and do those classes. The space that we're looking at needs some significant renovation. We're looking at probably investing about a million and a half dollars into making it a space where people feel welcome, where it feels like a kind of a newer, a newer space, just a place where they can come and, and kind of hang out, but also be learning at the same time. We have support so far from the school district, Business Oregon, Land County Government, Lane Workforce Partnership, Oregon Community Foundations, and about 10 businesses so far. And we're just continuing to work with them to try and bring in that revenue to make that space what we want. We feel really strongly that this is going to benefit Springfield youth the most because of its proximity to the high schools and the middle schools. It's on the Willamette Lane. They can get to Willamette Lane quickly from where we're at. And so we're really excited to hopefully have this space and just connect Springfield youth with workforce development. Hopefully get them excited and curious about what they might want to do after they graduate. Pause and see if there's any questions.
Joe.
I think you, this exciting stuff, good, good stuff. Couple of questions. Is there, what are you asking of Springfield or are you, or is this just an informational?
There's an ask later in your agenda around a long-term lease.
Okay. Oh, that one.
Yep.
I'm putting it together now.
That's us.
The other part is, is name the unions that have stepped up to help with the trades and developing our youth where it would be advantageous for them who are starving for employees.
Yeah. We mostly work with the industry partners, not with the unions themselves. So I can't, I can't name any off the top of my head, but we're, we work with Lake Community College pretty extensively to try and prepare students for their apprenticeship programs. We work with a lot of companies to try to get kids excited about apprenticeship and then we kind of help them apply for that. We don't necessarily work with the unions because you have to be in the apprenticeship program to work with them. And that's kind of the place at which we, the youth transition out of our care, if that makes sense. So.
Well, it doesn't make sense for the unions not to help invest themselves into this organization. And I'm only saying it publicly not to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
At all. But I'm saying it publicly that this is an opportunity for the unions to step up and be part of the solution as opposed to being the benefactor of everybody else's efforts.
Yeah. I'd love your help with that.
Yeah, well, we got somebody here that's used to that. He's got his hand up, I think.
Well.
So that was a hint for you, Leonard.
So Heidi, this is a topic that's clearly a lot of interest for us and you're going to like, thank you for taking some of the questions, but I'm going to let folks kind of talk and ask some questions here. And some of them are pointed probably towards your, your organization and some of them are broader, I guess, opinions about how we approach workforce in, in, in Lane County. Damian.
Hi, Damian.
Hi, how are you? So, I mean, we all, I mean, I've been pretty vocal about how much, you know, I'm a proponent for this. But I guess one thing that I am curious about, has there been any talk about like small expansion in, in providing, you know, life skills? I can't tell you how many college students I've worked with since I've been here from Eugene or Springfield, even Portland, who, you know, don't know how to cook, you know? And so yes, they might have the, you know, acumen to do technological stuff and math and science, but they can't really take care of themselves, which I think is a huge part of professional development. I'm just curious, is there any talk about expect, like doing something like in that realm or, or is there a way for you to potentially partner with another organization or an entity that can provide that service? And inherently, if you all work together, you can become stronger and have more power in Springfield and Eugene.
Yeah. So we're, we're actively already doing a little bit of that. When we opened our physical space in Eugene, we have a monthly thing called Yeah, so we're, we're actively already doing a little bit of that. When we opened our physical space in Eugene, we have a monthly thing called Wonder Wednesday. So it's a, a Wednesday that I think it's the first Wednesday of the month. Um, it's usually a four to six and we bring in different speakers. So we've done things like housing rights, um, accessing housing. We did how to cook with a, a crock pot and then we gave everybody a crock pot. Uh, so like really simple recipes, especially a lot of the youth that we work with are lower income and um, don't always have all of the, you know, kind of kitchen utensils or even ovens sometimes. And so something that you could just plug into a wall. Um, some of the other topics, um, recently we did on accessing healthcare. Um, so we, we help young people get signed up with health insurance if they don't have it. Um, we've done how to open a bank account. So yeah, I, I welcome any ideas and, and in all of those cases, we are partnering with nonprofits and other social service providers because that's not our specialty, um, but bringing in things um, that hopefully are some of those life skills. Sorry, I know I'm looking up there, but I should probably be looking somewhere else. I could just see David out there. Um, but yeah, we, I'd love more ideas. Uh, the, the young people typically give us the ideas of kind of what they're looking for. Most recently for Halloween, we did a how to dress professionally. They all came in costume and then uh, our staff came in our, you know, normal kind of business casual so that they could understand what it looks like for an interview or your first day of work. Um, so yeah, we're trying to infuse some of that into what we do too.
Leonard, all right, Damien, were you done?
Uh, I just one quick question. So, you know, I, I, I've noticed that a lot of programs, especially ones that uh, work with any type of minoritized populations have been coming under fire, not necessarily under fire, but people have been asking for some type of assessment, not necessarily always quantitative, but a lot of qualitative assessment. And has that been something that's kind of been implemented to where, you know, organizations want to support, but they want to see proof that this is something that is, 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 is working, any type of assessment piece that has been implemented or at least been thought about?
Yeah, we do. So thank you for bringing that up. Uh, the majority of the, the youth that we work with are young people that haven't historically had access to this type of learning or they're underrepresented in a lot of STEM fields. And so Spark uh, on Seventh has been about ninety percent BIPOC with specifically Latinx and African-American youth accessing. And so we do do a lot of pre and post conversations and um, interviews with the young people to make sure that they feel safe. And that's typically our measure. Do they feel safe with the adults? Do they feel safe in the space? Um, and so we do get asked that by funders a lot. Um, you know, kind of what are, you know, what questions are you asking and, and how are you addressing the needs of the BIPOC populations?
Leonard.
Um, thanks, Sean. I, um, thanks for this presentation. It's very informative and very, uh, very exciting potentially. The uh, the, there is a um, an outfit called Northwest Youth Corps. Um, that right off of um, uh, right off of I five. And it seems as though they, they do some vocational training and some outreach to marginal um, youth. And it seems as though their services would coordinate to an extent with the, your Elevate and Navigate programs. And I, I just wanted to find out, I mean, have you, um, have you done any sort of communications or um, or coordination with that program?
Yeah, we actually send them youth quite often. Um, our, the Navigate program that I talked about just briefly is our re-engagement program. And we often are sending uh, our young people to Northwest Youth Corps to get their first kind of work experience. Cause part of that program is giving um, youth a kind of a training wheel job. Um, and then once they've kind of demonstrated success and understand what it's like, then we, we move them on into a paid opportunity. And so often, um, I can think of a picture in my head that we had, we had three young people at Northwest Youth Corps, Youth Corps that graduated.
Sure, and um, Counselor Pictionary brings up a great point. I mean, uh, the uh, the unions do benefit and reap the benefits of um, the, this kind of a program. And toward that end, um, there are unions that have apprenticeships, the plumbers, the electricians,
Yep.
um, the carpenters that do sponsor programs at Northwest Youth Corps to just sort of um, feed into the apprenticeships that they have out of their union halls. And so, um, would you wel-, would you welcome that kind of participation from uh, local unions?
Yeah, we'd love it.
All right.
Yep.
Good deal.
All right, um. This looks great. This is the most material I've seen about what you've done and, and one, in one sitting, so it's exciting information. I know we, we're gonna get to an agenda item later. Uh, I guess the two, the, the two places um, that I, that I kind of have comments would be really, you know, for, th- this is about kids and having a great, and having a great workforce. And um, when, when I look at how much money is being spent in these programs right now, and I think it's really on all of either the public, private agencies, nonprofits, to really sort of be able to pull back and be able to work left to right. And, well, you know, and I know this isn't going to be a, a question, this is going to be more a just Sean's opinion here. Um, these problems are really tough, right? Getting kids into the system, taking care of them, making sure that they end with the skills and careers. And it requires that we, you know, all the partners work together. And one of the concerns I have are things that I'm constantly thinking about when I look at the wo- workforce partnership world is how do we actually do it better? Because we've got a lot of cash from the government coming down. And um, and sometimes we don't do a very good job of making sure, you know, we're not duplicating efforts. We work left to right. We make it as easy as possible for kids to go from graduation all the way into a great job. And I don't know if you have an opinion here, I just wanted to say, say that now that you were here. Um, because I think it's something that the groups involved have to do a better job with.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I don't, I don't know if I have more of an opinion with that. I think, um, we're very fortunate to work closely with the Workforce Investment Board and a lot of the sort of sector membership groups like OMEP, uh, Manufacturing Extension and the Tech Association. Um, and ultimately what we're trying to do is, is not duplicate things. And I think our board and our staff are very aware of that. So oftentimes there are instances when we actually step away and sort of let folks kind of carry forward, so.
I'm glad to hear that.
But yeah, and I'm on the board of Land Workforce Partnership and then their ED is on our board as well. So there's a lot of communication and, and definitely ma- trying to make sure that we're kind of all working together.
Yeah, and there's a lot of work the Chamber of Commerce currently does around, around this as well.
Work-ready. Yeah, yeah, we're familiar with that too. We've worked with them on our Elevate program uh, for the last five years, trying to make sure that the um, experiences that they were offering to Springfield youth, we were doing something to complement. So they were typically doing like an eighth grade hands-on day and then we would do a seventh grade. So we were just making sure that there wasn't that duplication.
And you're, you're, you're describing the thing that I'm really listening for, which is, hey, we're all talking, right? If you have seventh grade, we have eighth grade, or if we have eighth grade, we have seventh grade. And the last comment before I let you go, are those your kids?
Those are my kids. I offered to let them watch a movie at home, but they wanted to come, so. They're here. That's Emerson and Veronica.
Oh.
Hi.
Thanks for bringing them.
Yeah.
Michael, it's always great when we have kids in the, in the council chamber.
Well, hopefully they're learning something too. They got to meet the, the governor earlier this year too, so it's been a good, good political year for them.
Oh, one more thing.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
Now, the um, population, your target population is eighteen below?
Uh, twenty, up to twenty-four.
So which.
Yeah.
Which I had going here is that another potential resource is through the Sherman Center at the Land County Jail. They have a, the education program for inmates.
The MLK program? Like the, at the?
No.
Different one?
Land County Jail.
Land County, okay. We work with MLK and the Phoenix Program already, but okay.
MLK has got an education program for adults that uh, work on their GEDs. They also have a, a, an agreement with DMV so they can get licenses, et cetera, those part of those
Okay.
basic things. But there's uh, actual certified LCC faculty members that go to the jail and are authorized to get GED credentials for those students.
That's great.
So there's a bunch of groundwork already done at the Land County Jail and many contacts through there. And there's also several different uh, funding sources that are being used at the jail, such as the Ford Foundation, the Kaye Family Foundation, and um, the Land County Economic Development monies that come from the state through all the refunds, so.
Great, thank you. We'll follow up with that too.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Uh, I think you've got a lot of people that are interested in what you're doing, so please, um, you know, if you've got more material, you know, get it to us because I think we'd all love to learn a little bit more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
All right. We're gonna proceed to other uh, public comment. I do not have anybody else in the room. Neil, do we have anybody on uh, line that wants to comment?
We are just giving folks a moment in case they want to raise their hand to make a comment. Not seeing any hands.
Okay.
Wait, I do see one hand. Um, you're ready?
Uh, let's do, yes, why don't you go ahead and bring them up? We got somebody in the crowd that wants to do them. AJ's gonna have a card for you to fill out. Um, if you can get her the information and then we'll bring you up, up right, right after.
Okay, all right. And our first speaker is David from Hope on Wheels, and David, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Work, I should be unmuted now.
We can hear you, David.
Uh, good evening. Um, this is David Strahan, Hope on Wheels. I'm also a site-leading volunteer with the Egan Warming Center. And I just wanted to thank the city again for allowing us to use the Memorial Building to provide winter shelter for our residents in need. Uh, it's a vital service and I wanted to share some numbers with you just a little bit that I know of. To date, uh, with our involvement with uh, Carry It Forward, Egan Warming Center, St. Vincent de Paul, and having that site in Springfield, we, we've been able to house nine of those folks who would normally come to us for service. So those are folks who won't be coming back this year needing our, needing that emergency shelter. Those are folks who are working on a durable housing program. And that's all because of folks in Springfield believe in the service that we provide as Egan, as an emergency warming site. And hopefully getting these folks a little more than a sandwich and a warm place, uh, but a hope and ability to stay alive on a freezing night. And the fact that they have Springfield as a place they can do that in. So I just wanted to say thank you for a personal note, um, that this is near and dear to my heart for providing those in Springfield with a place to be. Um, and we've had, it's not just our local homeless. I just wanted to share with you that we've had quality farm fire victims here. We've had hospital release folks here. We've had people broke down on the highway here. And of course, we've had our local homeless staying here also. So again, thank you again, uh, from the bottom of my heart, David Strahan.
Thank you, David.
Um, we still have um, someone in the council chambers filling out a card, but we have another hand up. That speaker is Tim Black. And Tim, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Um, and it's good follow-up with David and, and certainly well-timed um, with this crazy weather we're having this week. I just want to um, thank you officially on behalf of St. Vincent de Paul and Egan Warming Center for considering, uh, considering later tonight, once again, letting us use the Memorial Building. It, uh, it really is, um, i- i- it saves lives, um, right in the heart of downtown Springfield. Our mission is really simple, and that's just to provide a warm, safe place on nights when uh, you could die by being outside. That's it. That's our very simple mission. And you are um, allowing that to happen if, if you, uh, once again, uh, let us use that building and it, we really do appreciate it. Uh, you know, Sunday, we thought maybe it was going to be warmer and then um, about the middle of the afternoon, we watched things start to fall. Uh, the temperatures and the snow, uh, at least at my house. And you know, Egan used to have an official season, November fifteenth to March thirty-first. Uh, well, uh, as you know, um, the cold weather has arrived early. Uh, in the last few years, we opened in October a couple of times, uh, the last couple of years, and here we are again. So we really do like to say that we're gonna do our best to be ready on that first cold night. And we have a lot of kinks to work out, um, tomorrow, absolutely. Uh, and we could be open one night, we could be open three nights, we, we could be open six nights. That's the, the nature of what we do. And it's all about people like David and the volunteers. Egan exists today because of the volunteers. And uh, there's a lot of uh, organizational support from St. Vincent de Paul, um, behind the scenes. But when those shelters are open, those are all volunteers. And they all appreciate um, what uh, the city leadership and, and Neil does year after year of doing your best to help us find um, space. Um, it's a great partnership, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else online?
No other speakers online.
All right, uh, the one card I have is Colton Peterson. Would you please come forward and then uh, say your name and location in the city or address for the record?
I think I'm done.
Yes, Tim.
Hello, uh, I'm Colton Peterson. Uh, I go to Springfield High School and I live just down Seventh Street. Uh, sixty-three Pleasant Street. Um, so as a high schooler, I actually participated, I'm addressing Spark Lab. Um, I actually participated in some events and programs that they offered, such as the Elevate Paid Internship. And they were able to connect me with a local business that is Nine Wood, right down, um, I believe, A Street. And I was also able to attend two events that they hosted, which were the Coder Create Event and then a Marketing Jam, which the environment was extremely welcoming. And I really approve of one that is more local in the Springfield area rather than having to commute to Eugene. And I also believe that it would be easier for them to work with the Chamber of Commerce if they were closer to Springfield. And I also worked with the Work Ready Committee and connecting high school students with uh, the Chamber of Commerce and local businesses. And I think being able to do that even more and in a welcoming space is very crucial. That is all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there any council response? Okay, next item, please.
Here, the next item is an ordinance, and that is uh, replacing ordinance six four five zero, adopted October seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. This is ordinance number three, an ordinance annexing certain territory at twelve seventy-nine Janna Street, the intersection of Aspen Street and Janna Street and approximately three hundred thirty-nine foot long segment of Janna Street and Janus Court to the city of Springfield and Willamette Lane Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Rainbow Water District, adopting a separability clause and providing an effective date. And we have Andy Limberd here for the staff report.
Thanks, Neil. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Um, this ordinance is being submitted for council's consideration for adoption to correct an error. It was on one of the attachments to the prior ordinance adopted in October. Um, staff discovered the error after it was sent actually for confirmation with state and local agencies uh, for the change to the boundary and the legal description and diagram was incorrect. However, staff does note that all of the public notification and the signage um, that was posted on the site and also published in the newspaper and mailed out have the correct information. It was the adopted ordinance, um, that was the official document of record um, that also went to the city recorder's office that had the incorrect attachment. So the remedy for this, um, and I thank the city attorney Christina Cras for assisting me with this, is to provide a new ordinance to repeal and replace. And it's essentially allows for the swapping out of those exhibits uh, to indicate the correct area. Uh, so that's the nature of this ordinance. It does not require a public hearing. Um, we had the public hearing with the correct information. It's essentially changing the exhibit to the adopted ordinance that is this requirement, so. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you do have them.
Are there any questions? Then I think we're ready for the motion.
This is awkward. Uh, just, guess I read the whole thing. Uh, ordinance number three, an ordinance annexing certain territory.
Hey, Steve, I think you just have to uh, just design it to approve motion number three.
I can do that. I just, like I said, it's awkward, so just tell me what you want to do. I'll, I'll uh, make a motion to be ordinance number three as worded.
Second. All right, Neil, could you call the roll?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Riley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Hi, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero no's, one absent. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is business from the city council.
Anybody have business from the, uh, that they want to share? Um, the one piece of business that I did want to bring up. We did receive a memo from Commissioner Bernie that outlined work that was being done around the Glenwood Transfer Site. Uh, it came in our email directly from his desk. I would encourage, um, if you haven't, encourage you, if you haven't read it, take the time to read it. If you've got questions, get them to Nancy. Effectively what it's saying is that the commission's sort of moving forward with a plan to uh, move the transfer site. It's going to be a long time. But it's, it's good for us in the long term because that property would become available for redevelopment eventually. So this is the first, this is something I think we've all talked about for years and this is the first real actionable step the county's taken. All right. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is, uh, we have several items under business from the city manager. Item number one is introduction of Ally Camp as the city's economic development manager, and I have that item. So just ask Ally if she would join me up here. So, um, just going to talk for a few minutes and then I'll give Ally the microphone. But, um, just want to go over kind of where we've been the last eleven months. We did two really thorough recruitments, looking for a new economic development manager who fit the needs of the city. Turns out, the most professional and qualified candidate was already here living in Springfield. Ally, uh, served, uh, previously as the, um, Eugene's Development Investment Liaison, which included work in Eugene's Riverfront Urban Renewal District, supporting developers through the complexities of building on that site. So that might sound familiar to the work that we have waiting for her. Most recently, um, she also worked, um, in Eugene's Downtown Urban Renewal District. While she's here, she'll lead a three-member economic development team with an immediate focus on the Glenwood Riverfront Development, Blue McKenzie Apartments and Business Retention and Recruitment, not just in downtown Springfield, but throughout Springfield. Uh, that three-member team, there are two of those members here. Sam Kelly Quatroki, he's our economic development analyst. He's working on the RFQs, the contracts, the budgets, all of that detailed work that we need to make these projects move. And then you probably know Vahana Keen, who's been here for quite some time. She's our downtown, she's our economic development officer with a focus on downtown. But she's also taken over property management and kind of whipped all of that into shape, uh, in short order. So before I, um, say anymore, I just want to turn it over to Ally Camp and say congratulations on behalf of Nancy Newton and I and all of the city manager's office.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council and Neil for that great introduction. Uh, my name's Ally Camp. I just want to start off by saying I'm so excited to be here. Um, knowing that I am a Springfield resident and how important this work is to the council and the community, I think it means a lot. It resonates widely when someone can say that they're from this community and they're invested in its future. Um, Neil highlighted some of my experience. Um, it spans far and wide. Um, I've been working locally for about eleven years and I went to U of O. Um, so I've touched everything from transit, safe routes to school, new development, redevelopment, business assistance. Uh, and I'm most excited to start on the land development in the Glenwood area and with the downtown housing efforts. Uh, as a president, um, these are things I've been hearing about for a long time. And it feels pretty cool to know that I'm going to be a part of a team that helps bring them, uh, to the community. Um, that's all I had to say. I'm excited to be here. Uh, thank you. I look forward to seeing you more often.
I think we are all excited to have you. And it was great when, when I walked into the office and you were already here because people have been talking about this day for a long time and getting the economic development staff fully filled out and, you know, working in the, uh, working on these great projects is going to become important. So welcome. We'll be excited. We'll see you a ton.
Thank you.
Shortly. Next item.
Mayor, the next item is approval to enter into lease terms of three years with options to renew for an additional three years at the Booth Kelly Complex. Um, and Vahana Keen is here for the staff report.
So it really is economic development night here at the city council.
It is, it is. But right now it's property management night. Turn our hats around. Uh, so good evening, uh, Mayor and City Councilors. I decided to join you in person rather than hiding ten feet away in my office. It is so very nice to see you this evening. So in April, I came to you with a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into standard lease terms at the Booth Kelly Complex uh, through July first, two thousand twenty-seven. And this was an important move, um, because the purpose of this resolution was to state that it's a, a property that is not needed for public use through, through the next five years in duration. So essentially we say it is what it is for the next five years. Um, so the outcome for that resolution resulted in a standard lease, uh, at Booth Kelly, which is only one year in length. So I came to you in September to share that, um, we have a potential tenant who you have now met um, and would like to make an investment at the Booth Kelly, um, suite one fifty. Um, and upon our measurements, it's eleven thousand five hundred square feet. So it's a pretty large, uh, size. Uh, there was a request for additional information from you and, uh, financial impact, uh, for the three-year, uh, lease terms, and that's included in your packet. Any extension of the lease terms at Booth Kelly Complex past July first, twenty twenty-seven would of course be contingent upon approval of any additional resolution that would be extended, um, to the current resolution. Um, so I am here today requesting your permission to authorize the city manager to enter into lease terms of three years with an option to renew for an additional three years if requested by the tenant.
Joe.
Have any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
So, um, not trying to be a stick in the mud. I was, I'm always looking at making sure that, um, we're doing things correctly from every point of view, not saying that you're doing anything incorrectly. I just want to cross the Ts, dot the Is. So, um, this works out to, if my math is correct, about I'm sorry, me, um, about two thousand, actually close to three thousand a month. So it's thirty thousand a year. No, twenty thousand a year. So that's going to be about three thousand, whatever, four thousand, whatever. Anyway, is that the market rate for that size facility, number one? Number two, were other entities given the opportunity, the same opportunity for which they can look at that property and take advantage of that property so that we are, uh, and you know, I already love the program. So, but I want to, want to make sure that, that, um, someone doesn't come knocking on our door six months from now saying, how come, what about me? And then us find ourselves in a pickle. So I don't know legally. You know, was there any other requirements? Do we, are we obligated to give others opportunity? Are we obligated to go, because it is with the public interest? Are we obligated to go with the, uh, market rate? Those kind of, those kind of rules, are those been, have those been looked at and signed off?
Yeah, I can tell you, um, Counselor Pictionary, that those issues have been looked at. And it doesn't set a precedent for other tenants necessarily to approach this lease this way.
Cool, I'm, I'm ready. Leonard.
Those were the exact two questions that I was going to ask. Thank you.
Great questions.
Oh, sure you were.
All right, anybody else? Steve?
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter lease terms at the Booth Kelly Complex of three years with the option to renew for an additional three years if requested by the tenant.
Second. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Hi, thank you.
Uh, motion passes, five yeses, zero no's, one absent. Next item, please.
Great night.
Thanks, Vahana.
Uh, the next item is, uh, short-term lease for Emergency Warming Center. Uh, this is my item along with Christina Kraus, who's here virtually. So good evening again, Mayor and Council. On October twenty-fourth, uh, we brought a request we received from St. Vincent de Paul to use the memorial building on a temporary basis for one season for warming. Um, that was brought to CETA, CETA Board approved the short-term lease, um, agreement. Um, and we are now bringing it to the city. The city would, um, need to allow the use, um, of the facility as outlined. Um, and so what we're asking tonight is for you to authorize, uh, us to enter into a short-term lease with CETA for the seat-owned property at seven sixty-five A Street and then enter into a sublease with St. Vincent de Paul to facilitate the Emergency Warming Center.
Are there any questions? All right, Steve?
I make a motion, we authorize the assistant city manager to enter into a short-term lease with the Springfield Economic Development Agency, CETA, for the CETA-owned property at seven sixty-five A Street and to enter into a sublease for St. Vincent de Paul of Lane County to facilitate use as an emergency warming center by St. Vincent de Paul.
Second. Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Pitts.
Hi.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Stare.
Hi.
Counselor Woodrow and Counselor Pictionary.
Hi, thank you.
Motion passes, five yeses, zero no's, one absent. Next item, please.
Next item is any other business from the city manager.
Just one, uh, brief item. I just wanted to mention, um, upcoming, uh, Veterans Day holiday and, uh, take this opportunity to thank, uh, the members of our community, um, members of this council, uh, and employees that have served in our armed forces, uh, protecting our nation. And, uh, I thank you for your patriotism and your service to our country. Um, on a side note, I, um, want to also mention one, uh, special veteran that um, has been in my life, uh, which is my father, um, Stanley Emmanuel Anderson, um, who was a World War Two veteran. And, um, there were seven children in my father's family, five boys, two girls. All five of the, uh, boys in his family were enlisted in military service um, and served in different capacities in that war. Not all of them came back. Um, so my father passed away this past, uh, December third. And I would just like to, um, uh, mention his name this evening and, um, say how proud I am of his service. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Next item, please.
Your father was a hero.
Any business from the city attorney?
Uh, no, no additional business tonight.
All right, and we look like we are adjourned for the evening. So have a good night, everybody. Um, and we'll see you next week. Thank you.